Welcome, everybody, to the, thank you, October 9th Spokane City Council Legislative Session. We're going to have special guests here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you want to come forward? And everybody else, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Fister, would you please read the roll?
Council President Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Ulrich.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. And we have three proclamations tonight. The first one is International Day of the Girl. So I'm glad the Girl Scouts are here. That's going to be read by Councilmember Wilkerson.
Always my favorite honor to read this if Mr. Newberry come up. Whereas October 11th, 2023 marks a decade since the United Nations adopted Resolution 66/170 to declare October 11th as the International Day of the Girl, to recognize girls' rights and the unique challenges girls face around the world. And whereas the world's premier leadership development organization for girls, Girl Scouts has emphasized public service, civic engagement, and fostering a sense of community in girls for over a century. Girl Scouts works to champion the ambition, cultivate the talents, and develop the skills of girls to be leaders in their own world and in ours. Whereas these incredibly challenging times, Girl Scout provides community, consistency, and connection for girls, and is a safe haven in all the uncertainty. Despite a worldwide pandemic recently, Girl Scouts in this council adapted and overcame to grow over 4,000 girls last month, the most since 2013, and vowed to continue growing to provide girls optimism and adventure. Whereas Girl Scouts offer 21st century programming in science, technology, engineering, and math STEM, outdoors entrepreneurship, and beyond, helping girls develop invaluable life skills. The International Day of the Girl focuses attention on the need to address the challenges girls face and to promote girls empowerment and the rightful fulfillment of their human rights. Now, therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2023, as International Day of the Girl in Spokane, and encourage the community to recognize and honor the 1.1 billion girls across the globe who make the world a better place. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, Brian.
Can I just say something real quick?
Well, Brian, before you speak, they were going to help me in song. Where'd they go? Where'd they go? Are you guys still going to help me in song? Are you ready? Make new friends? Make new friends, but keep the old. One is silver and the other gold. Thank you.
I stood back from the mic on that one. You all don't want the admission for that. City Council President Kinnear, I still remember fondly you reading that proclamation last year to the city council and certainly Mayor of Spokane, Mayor Woodward. I'm Brian Newberry, the head of this great council of distinction. I just can't thank you enough for honoring our girls. We bring gifts here of cookies for you all to thank you all, but more importantly, we give you gifts of gratitude. You heard that number, 4,000 girls? That's the most since 2014. And I think we all recognize membership organizations are definitely in decline. We're not. We're coming back. We're coming back strong. And we couldn't do it without the citizens of Spokane that you have represented in this great council and your leadership matters. The father and mother are military service here. The father out here just was recently selected for weapons school out at Fairchild Air Force Base, one of the most elite flying slots out there, kind of the Top Gun of the tanker world out there. But 38,000 cookies every year, give or take, are donated to our military, to our first responders, and to our healthcare workers. That is, I would argue, the most in the nation proportion-wise. And that's because Spokane is such a beautiful place. So thank you for helping us get to 4,000. Thank you for making a difference and making our world a better place. And girls, did you hear all those words? Those were all for you. And they basically said, "Your voice matters." And this Wednesday, we're going to celebrate 1.1 billions of girls across the world whose voice matters. And tonight, we celebrate yours. Thank you, council, for making our world a better place.
Council President.
Yes.
Point of personal privilege.
Certainly.
So as Brian was talking about the 38,000 cookies that are donated to service members and first responders, I know that Renee and many in this organization, as the fires were happening here in this area, that they had van loads of cookies that they were taking to first responders as well to donate, to give them a morale boost as it was going. So thank you, guys, for that. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks you for that.
Thank you. Next proclamation is Pregnancy Infant Loss Awareness Month, and that's Councilmember Bingle.
Whereas many parents and families across the United States are devastated each year by the loss of their child to stillbirth, miscarriage, SIDS, or any other cause at any point during pregnancy or infancy. And whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan declared October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month to recognize the unique grief of bereaved parents in an effort to demonstrate support to the many families who have suffered such a tragic loss. And whereas promoting awareness of pregnancy and infant loss not only increases the likelihood that grieving families will receive understanding and support, but also results in improved education and prevention efforts, which may ultimately reduce the incidence of these tragedies. Now, therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in Spokane. And in remembrance of Colton D. Langen, encourage parents, caregivers, and all residents to become educated in opportunities to prevent pregnancy and infant loss and support bereaved families when prevention is not possible.
Hi, I'm Katie Langen. Colton D. Langen is my son. It's emotional for me today because five years today was the day I went to the hospital and had my boys. Well, was planning to have my boys. I had them at 26 weeks and six days. And I know Mr. Bingle just had twins. Congratulations to you, sir. It's very emotional to be a parent and to lose a child, especially at 12 days old, being 1 pound 11 ounces, and your other struggling for his life at 2 pounds 3 ounces. I talk to parents every year, and I talk to schools, and I talk to just families and grandparents. And here are their struggles and their journeys. And they don't have the support that they need. And so just to be a shoulder to cry on and a voice to hear, it's very nice. And to have our city support us and honor the fact that our children did matter, and they still do matter. And so I say Colton's name every year, and I continue to say his name, and I will until my last days, because he will always be forever my angel. And I know that probably people in this room right now have lost children. And I want to recognize that fact, that you are worth it, and you are loved, and you are honored, and you are brave to have gone through your struggle. And there are many of those people that got told that their children didn't matter and that they need to keep it quiet. And I'm wanting to be that voice, that they matter, they're worth it, they're loved. And I thank you, guys, for being an amazing community to us and honoring our children. Thank you.
Thank you. So right now, I'd like to welcome Spokane Tribal Councilmember Tiger Peon. Are you here? Come on up. Thanks for coming. Councilmember Stratton is going to read the Land Acknowledgement and Indigenous Peoples' Day Proclamation.
Before I begin, I just want to say how grateful and thankful I am that I get to read this in public. And as I read this, Tiger, I will keep our ancestors close. I will hold them close and honor them with these words. "We acknowledge that we are on the unsated land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and the resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all of our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people." And now, the proclamation.
Impressive. Wow. I mean, okay, it just got hot in here.
You relax, and I got one more piece to read.
Oh, great.
See, so you get.
More to come.
Yeah, more to come. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations, sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And the United States endorsed the United Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People on December 16th, 2010. And whereas the City of Spokane is built upon the homeland and village sites of the indigenous people of this region and recognizes that the indigenous peoples of the land that would later become known as the Americas have lived here since time immemorial. And whereas the City of Spokane recognizes the historical and spiritual significance of Spokane Falls to the native people of the region who came to the falls as a gathering place for fishing, spiritual practice, trading, celebrations, and the shaping of bounty. Now, therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim October 9th, 2023 as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Spokane and urge citizens to recognize the values of the many contributions made by the community through Indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contributions that have and continue to affect the character of Spokane.
All right. Thank you. My name's Tiger Peon. My Spokaneian name is Sleepsmew. I'm on a five elected council for the Spokane tribe. And when we start our day, we usually talk about our children, the seven generations that we talk about, that we try to pray for. But in times like when we introduce ourselves like this, we mention our elders. And we have to remember why we're here. They are the ones through the hardships that they endured. My parents, Cub and Gracia Peon. My grandparents on my father's side is Richard and Margaret Peon. And my grandparents were Norbert and Christine Abrahamson. And I should have brought some water, because I'm getting dry quick. On my mother's side, her parents were Clara and Len Feick. So it's just so important that we mention their names. And that's why we're here today. I'm here because of them. I want to thank you for inviting me to speak on the ancestral lands of the Spokane tribe. You know, whenever Spokane City reaches out, I'm one of the first ones to grab it. Because we talk about that as a tribe, is when, if you don't accept it, pretty soon the hand quits getting extended. So with us being on our ancestral lands, we will do it. And I'll gladly speak anytime. So thank you for that. We have a mantra. You know, we're on Indigenous Day. And, oh, look at you. You know, it's Indigenous Day. But as a mantra for our tribe, we have one where it says, "It's a good day to be Spokane," every day. Every day, we wake up, cast a shadow. We look around, and that's what we live by. So I just wanted to throw that out there. The land acknowledgement, wow. It resonates with genuineness. It's powerful. I've seen a bunch, and I respect all of them. But wow, way to knock it out of the park, Spokane City Council. Nice job. I've enjoyed working on the, with the city. I'm in my second term. First term, we've worked with Palisades Park, Beacon Hill, Spokane River Cleanup, and the Spokane River Float, which I think Mr. Zepone, Council Zepone, was part of that. Great day. You know, I enjoy, we enjoy sharing it, sharing those times. And through that first term, I really have to give some recognition to Garrett Jones. You know, he never missed a beat to try to include the Spokane tribe. And I felt it was genuine in his want. Thank you, Garrett, from everything, from the parks to the conventions. He'd reach out, and that means a lot. Thank you. And I'm doing this without my glasses, so that's pretty good so far. Okay? Currently, we had a visit from Matt and Kelly for the Expo 74 anniversary. And that was exciting. That was before, I think I was about an eight- or nine-year-old, and we actually danced on the other side of the bridge on that. So they came out, and they're looking to involve the Spokane tribe. And we have people within Spokane tribe, Margot Hill, Jeff Ferguson. So to be part of the planning group, so that's appreciative. We talked about the, and I want to appreciate the council for the listening session on the Spokane Downtown Stadium, giving us an ear, respecting our voice. So when we talk about consultations, it means a lot when it's true consultation. I want to thank you, guys, for the support of our buildings in Spokane, from the 477 Tannif up north to the Indiana Building, which houses our Health and Human Services departments. Because we share the same people, the students. We share the land. And we always pride ourselves on being good neighbors. So thank you. I look forward to the future of our relationships. Even though I'm in my second term, I hope to be around longer, and share in the growth that Spokane has to offer and what we have to offer as a tribe on ancestral lands. And I'd like, I don't know who to thank on this one, but we have our THPO officer, Tribal Historic Preservation, Randy Abrahamson. He's involved with the expansion, acquisition, developments within Spokane. And he relays all of our cultural information to the tribe because of what may be unearthed. And we respect that, and we appreciate that. So we don't have a word for goodbye. It's nemheth wychdymyn. See you, translates into see you later. So nemheth wychdymyn.
Thank you, Tiger. Appreciate it. Next, we have a special report. We're honored to have Mayor Woodward here with us to give us a statement of conditions and affairs of the city. So welcome, Mayor.
Well, good evening, Council President, members of the city council, and the community members who are here in person tonight, and those who are watching on City Cable 5. I appreciate everyone's time and attention as we discuss what's ahead for our city during the annual Statement of Conditions and Affairs. Like cities around the state and the country, we have been through a lot and are in a time of economic uncertainty. We are also in a time of great opportunity and great control of what happens next. I visit regularly with people at their homes, in parks, at their places of work, in the grocery store, neighborhood council meetings and events. And whether I'm at Glass Park, Hillendale Park, Chief Gary Park, Comstock Park, or Riverfront Park, in East Central, Five Mile, The Yard, Audubon, Eagle Ridge, or West Hills, they always talk about the health and safety of their neighborhoods. Families want to know that their children can climb on the playground equipment without worrying about needles and used foil. People want to drive downtown to work or to a movie and not step over waste or around a corner and into danger. They want to know their vehicles will be safe when they leave them and when they return. And when crime does occur, they want to know that the perpetrators of criminal activity will be held accountable. They also want to know that there are services available for those who truly are at a low point in life and need a supportive hand up. They want a balanced approach that includes every opportunity for support and tougher guardrails to ensure personal accountability. Over the past few years, we've built on the foundation to accomplish each of those things. We have been there for Spokane neighborhoods to build the needed public safety and services infrastructure, to support local and state legislation that reestablishes expectations for everyone to live by, and to rebuild partnerships that allow us to respond and grow as one greater regional community. This work has come at a cost, which leaves us at a turning point with a clear path forward. That path is through collaboration, strategic investment in core services, and a willingness to start with the goal of a healthy and safe Spokane as the common outcome we are all working so hard to achieve. Tonight, according to the Spokane City Charter, Article 4, Section 24, I am fulfilling my duty as mayor to deliver the Statement of Conditions and Affairs at the Second October Meeting of the City Council. During our time together, we'll talk about that clear path forward and the opportunities before us. We'll touch on the foundation that we have built together and talk about the work each of us has ahead. We've worked very hard as a community to bounce back from the pandemic. Spokane has never been a city to experience the highest economic peaks or the lowest valleys. And that experience largely holds true in this instance with a few notable exceptions. Unemployment in Spokane County is about half of what it was at the height of the pandemic and hovering around the lows over the past 30 years. That bit of good news comes with one important caveat. Participation in the labor force is the lowest in a decade and well below our 30-year norm. Anyone who's tried to hire new employees in recent months has experienced both sides of that equation. Spokane is certainly not unique in that regard. Wages have also increased, although at a rate well below the state average. Assessed property valuation is one area where we have really experienced an uncharacteristic departure from typical Spokane behavior relative to state and national trends. These are the increases in home valuation over just the past three years: 12.3%, 11.9%, and 29.7%, each faster than the state average and carrying extra barriers for entering the housing market. That combination of forces, a drop in labor force participation, lagging wage increases, and a rapid increase in assessed property valuation is in critically important context for the decisions we make and the services we provide. We live in a community with a median household income of just under $60,000 countywide. Half of our community lives on less than that amount, and some in the city significantly less. These are important factors that we're thinking about as we discuss the city budget over the next several weeks. Wages, labor participation, housing costs all figure heavily in our budgeting approach and are yielding emphasis on resetting ourselves around our core principal services. And we are not alone. More than one-third of the state cities reported their revenues are not expected to keep up with expenses. That's according to the Association of Washington Cities Survey. And 82% reported that increased costs of city services are a concern to their community. In the same survey, 59% of cities reported that revenue expenditure imbalances were driven by a combination of factors, including short-term economic downturn, inflation, increasing costs, and long-term ongoing structural challenges. Spokane is experiencing each of those. Challenging times often require a return to fundamentals. The Association of Washington Cities defines core municipal services as public safety, street infrastructure, parks and recreation, planning, growth management, environmental protection, stormwater management, water and wastewater management. These basic city services are anything but basic. Each comes with layers of complexity and are subject to the same rising cost pressures that we all face daily in our own households. As I mentioned earlier, in Spokane and likely in most communities, public safety and homelessness are the top priorities in our neighborhoods, and they're reflected in our priority-based budget. Public safety accounts for more than half of the general fund portion of the budget. Homelessness is largely funded out of the general fund by state and federal grants that the city allocates to our local partners. We have been strategic in our approach in these and other areas and to achieve the best outcomes for individuals and the community. For police services, that means spreading our resources over 100,000 calls annually to get the right level of response based on the immediacy of need. Call complexity has increased over the past few years in highly strained situations, and that requires more police resources for longer times, placing even greater demand on already stretched resources. So we've been smart about how we use our resources. We've paired behavioral health providers with officers to drive down trips to the emergency room or to jail. And we're there to help those who simply are in the middle of a crisis and need immediate care. That approach has resulted in a different outcome about 80% of the time and avoided thousands of hours of patrol time response. We reconfigured our staffing model in January to put more officers on patrol and in neighborhoods. That includes doubling the number of officers in our downtown, the region's economic engine and playground, while emphasizing enforcement in certain areas, most recently around Second and Division. Property crime is down nearly 15% downtown through the first three quarters of this year, while overall crime is down more than 10%. The Violent Crimes Task Force, which began its work a little more than a year ago, has removed more than 150 of the most dangerous and prolific offenders out of our neighborhoods. The Trent Resource and The Trent Resource and Assistance Center, which combines emergency night-by-night space and services in one navigation center-style location, has consistently served more than 300 individuals and their pets each night since opening a year ago, and the city is in active conversation with other local jurisdictions about establishing a regional homeless authority to continue improving and evolving how we get individuals housed. We expanded our homeless outreach team hours of service and added weekend coverage to make more consistent service connections and to improve neighborhood cleanliness. That team is on pace to remove more than 800,000 pounds, that's 400 tons of litter and debris this year, and is part of a network connecting people to shelter and services that includes service providers and first responders. Our planning team has partnered with the Public Works Team to find new ways for people to achieve homeownership by growing housing inventory while being mindful of neighborhood and infrastructure burdens. That includes a creative plan to bond against new sales tax revenue designated for affordable housing and mental health services to more quickly build attainable housing supply. We've also added the ability to build multiple units on a single-family lot to increase rental and homeownership opportunities. Work is also underway to update development fee structures that have gone untouched for more than a decade, and there is plenty of opportunity. As of last month, the city has now issued permits for more than 1,000 units of housing for the third year in a row. Of course, new development comes with increased demand on city services and on infrastructure. In neighborhoods like the Leita Valley, where housing development has been designated to occur by the State Growth Management Act, we're evaluating new ways to meet existing needs and future impacts. We're working on an idea to combine planned sewer work around city-owned property designated for a new fire station to get the location shovel-ready and more attractive for state construction funding. Greater fire safety emphasis, education, and enforcement in that wildland urban interface area will help address immediate safety considerations that have been raised by neighborhoods, while work is also done to fund and improve existing transportation infrastructure. Updated development fees will help pay for future infrastructure needs, including fire services related to new development. These core services are important city priorities and will factor heavily in the final proposed budget that I will deliver to you next month. So will the reality of what our households are able to support. The foundation that we've established through hard work, updates to how the city provides services, and the partnerships that we have built have us well-prepared to continue delivering core services and at the highest level. We are at a turning point. Our plan is to get us back to basics, to build the infrastructure to move us forward as we continue toward the goal of being the safe and healthy city we all want. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and her team. Thank you all for being here. Can they stand up?
Can they stand up?
There, here we go. Thanks. All right, we're going to switch gears. You all know the drill. It's open forum time, and we've been clapping and cheering, et cetera, but we're not going to do that now, so we do not have clapping and cheering and booing or public outbursts. There's going to be a two-minute, there is a two-minute time limit on open forum and a three-minute time limit on legislative items. Just remember that it is a limited forum. All matters discussed in the open forum shall relate to the affairs of the city, and individuals speaking during open forum direct your comments to me. And then finally, this is my favorite part, duty of mutual respect. It's the constant duty of each council member, all of us, to treat each other, city staff, board and commission appointees, and the public with respect. Likewise, all persons who attend a council meeting or interact with council members or council staff in any type of forum or communication, regardless of the form or format, must act respectfully toward all persons. Thank you. And the first three, if you would come down, Brianna Franzen, Lindsay Sofies, I'm sorry if I'm mutilating your last names, and Jennifer Hoover. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Brianna Franzen. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today. I'd like to preface my statement by stating I'm speaking for myself as a former employee of Scraps. I'm going to read for you my resignation letter that I sent in October of 2022, just pieces of it, because I've made it extremely long to tell them why I was actually leaving. So, in recent speeches, there has been some insinuation that the shelter was a disaster physically, and smell, and food everywhere. That is absolutely not the case. The realities of the situation are in stark contrast to the words we are broadcasted, and there's clearly no change coming in the future. These are my exact words on my resignation letter. The priorities are not aligned to retain the staff, which creates an unmaintainable workload for the loyal staff that has not yet wavered. As we've previously discussed on multiple occasions, the staff has zero work-life balance and are working far too many hours of overtime. They're suffering at the hands of Spokane County senior leadership and the politicians. We've continuously asked for additional staff, even extra help, and have constantly been ignored. The work and hours we have been afflicted by have been unsustainable for an extremely long time, and we are constantly told to hang on. Things will get better. We just need a strong leader, and so on. Scraps is losing and has lost the foundation staff and continues to ignore it. Prioritizing directors and leadership staff while having a demolished foundational staff is leading Scraps into a grave situation. There will not be any staff who knows how to care for these animals, handle the animals properly, medicate them, complete impound exam, or provide basic care. The knowledge, experience, and historical staff that's being lost in this situation is catastrophic for the future of Scraps. This is a grim reality that has not yet been, or has not been faced.
Brianna, time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lindsay, Jennifer Hoover, and then Kevin Van Hook.
Brianna, thank you for sharing those words.
Hi, council members. My name is Lindsay Sofis. For years, this community raised the ethical standing of Spokane County, but now county leadership, led by Scott Simmons, whose attitude before you and misrepresentations to you on Wednesday were as egregious as Scraps' recent operations, is not only bent on returning to regressive, unethical shelter and community service practices, but also on lying to you and the people about what was, about the resolve, dedication, heart, and talent demonstrated by several of the people sitting in the gallery tonight, some of whom you've heard from and all of whom I was fortunate to call my partners, teachers, and compasses. Unfortunately, many of them join me now in being slandered by those whose interests do not extend beyond their own. Yes, some of us shared our offices with animals. Yes, we use shelter resources creatively and made space for all those in need. Yes, sometimes the shelter smelled like its residence. Often, the over 70 cats whose main rooms the county designed with half-walls, such that they share airspace with the conference room. And yes, all shelters draw mice, as Scraps has since before my time. Instead of shoring up the shelter and investing in more secure food storage, the county opted to rely on kill traps, which, as I tried to explain, do not address the core problems. This is of no matter to current leadership, however, which has made clear that it views killing as an acceptable way to dismiss with inconveniences, no matter how illusory the relief, how complex the matters, or how sentient the victims. On a final note, I appreciated the softball Councilmember Bingle so strategically lobbed to Scott about the Scraps facility. It was a moment of politics at its most naked. Anyone is, of course, free to swallow the lies and excuses being fed them by the county, but they best not equate that with knowing anything about how things were at Scraps or how things should be.
Lindsay, time's up. Thank you. Appreciate it. Jennifer Hoover, Kevin Van Hook, and then Edwin Andrews.
Okay, well, it's an honor to be here, and thank you so much for your time and listening. Really wanted to make a point about the amount of community discord. I've been really heavy on my heart with it as a member of the community, and really wanted to say that we need to try and build a spirit of unity. That means treating one another the way we want to be treated. I also wanted to say the seat of authority is not one of pride or privilege, it's one of a humble servant. And so, when some of us make a mistake or we miss it in the public eye, I think it's important to remember to treat that person in the way we would want to be treated. The more collaborative and greater good is that we work together, we work better together. And I hope that if there is any indifference, any unforgiveness, any resentment towards the other party, so to say, we can forgive them because we work better together. And I'm hoping and praying that we can come together and collaborate our differences so that we can listen to build a better community. And I just wanted to remind everyone of Psalm 133, how good and how pleasant it is when brothers and sisters live together in unity. It is like the precious oil poured down on the head, running down on the beard, running down on Aaron's beard. It is as if the dew of Herman were falling on Mount Zion, for there the Lord bestows his blessing and life forevermore. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kevin, Edwin, and then Megra is going to call in.
Thank you, council members, Council President. I want to refute the statements that was given to you last week by CEO of Spokane, Scott Simons. His descriptions of statements about Scraps and its facility are patently false and misleading. The only accurate statement that he made was that he is not a veterinarian. The starting point that he describes Scraps' current directors having inherited from the previous administration is correct. The previous administration consisted solely of one person for five months, and that person is Spokane Senior Director of Spokane Community Affairs, Catherine Nichols. In five months as interim director of Scraps, Catherine Nichols made herself an office in a community room that Scott Simons would later describe as uninhabitable. She was on-site once a week, if at all. She refused to fill staff vacancies, and at one point, morning crews only had two staff members to fill a work commitment that would usually require four staff members. Volunteers and other staff members pitched in to help with the work that was needed and required. Catherine Nichols never thanked these staff members and later labeled them as activists for speaking up about her poor leadership skills. Scott Simons also stated that the Scraps' relationship with his rescue partners and community has deteriorated. Scraps has long developed and fostered its relationship with local rescues and community groups, including Spokane United Society and Spokaneimal. Those relationships and others were cemented and flourished under the administration preceding Catherine Nichols. Under the current director, these relationships are at all-time low. He has repeatedly refused to work with local rescuing community groups to the detriment of the animals in his care and he claims to serve. Also, Spokane County CEO Scott Simons states that Scraps is not a shelter. If it's not, it is animal control, as he states. Why does Spokane's Code, Section 504, 2-0, definitions, item 5, animal shelter exist? It exists because Scraps is an animal shelter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Edwin Andrews, Megra, and then Tanya.
I go by Larry Andrews. I live here in the city, I have since '58, so... Eight million illegals have passed through our southern border this year. If you look how many will make it to Spokane, that'd be about 80,000 if you run the number that's coming here at some time. Now, the president is going to build a wall, just like the past president did. This has to be done with the homeless. The homeless have invaded my business, and now they're at my doorstep at home, okay? The lady told me she wasn't from my area, but she heard that she can get three square meals a day, all the needles she wants, and a place to stay. These people don't want to change. Why would they? They're getting all they want. Giving to them, I personally don't believe that this should be in our city. I don't mind helping a person get out of a problem, but to keep giving and giving and giving and no change happening because they don't want to change, that giving is no good, and we're just making the person worse. We're putting the person in the grave, okay? And I can't live with it anymore. I mean, my wife used to go to Catholic school on the South Hill, and after school, she could walk down to the bottom and get a bus home. You couldn't do that anymore in this city, okay? The past two council presidents and our present council president have allowed camping in our city, and if you look back at the numbers, that camping has caused the problem. We're accepting the problem. We can't accept the problem anymore.
Larry, time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Megra, you're on line, or you're phoning in? Press star 3.
Go ahead, Megra.
Winter is coming, and there are more Spokaneites living without shelter than ever before. The city's most recent point-in-time count shows a 36% increase in the county's homeless population to almost 2,400 persons, and that is thought to be another undercount by experts who have boots on the ground. Jules Helping Hands, a local organization that has respectfully provided food, warmth, showers, and other supplies for years, released their data a couple weeks ago detailing over 7,000 engagements. There's only around 1,000 shelter beds available, and most of those have hoops to jump through or other qualifications necessary to obtain a spot, and that's thousands less than the number of humans who cannot survive winter weather without help. Despite the lack of beds and options available, instead of helping these people, they're being further criminalized. The mayor recently announced Spokane is also asking the Supreme Court to overturn Martin v. Boise, which ruled it a cruel and unusual punishment to criminalize being homeless by arresting people who have nowhere else they are able to go. The Vera Institute of Justice describes this, quote, "The criminalization of homelessness leads to a never-ending and escalating cycle that shuffles people from the streets to the jail and back again." Instead of criminalization, we need humane solutions. Solutions Jules Helping Hands, whose Spokane's CHHS Committee overwhelmingly determined was the best to run Trent Shelter's 350 beds, they provide these solutions. Jules Helping Hands includes mental health and addiction treatment, help that actually lifts people permanently into housing. They are who we should be funding if we do not want to see people living in the streets. They're who we should be giving money to if we want to see permanent solutions and if we don't want the homeless to be at our door in order to give them somewhere to go and to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tanya, then Rick Bocook, Mike Gleason.
Thank you, everyone. I think now the landlords, you know, at apartment complexes now need to make rules now that says the guests, people that have guests over, you know, should not be cleaning their places for them, you know, or taking their garbages out for them, you know, because you never know, you know, they might have other jobs, you know, too, and they might want to rest when they get to their place, too, you know, and they might, they might have a hard day that day, too, with what they were doing that day, too, and people, too, they need to stop complaining about body odors, too, you know, on buses and bowling alleys, you know, too, because, you know, because people there, you know, they have body odors over there, too, you know, and you never know, you know, you might... body odors over there, too, you know, and you never know, you know, you might be smelling yourselves, too, over there, you know, and people might think that you don't, that you don't take showers when you go over there, too, you know.
Thank you. Rick Bowcook, Mike Gleason, and Justice for All.
Round four. The speech about, the mayor was talking about safety and protection, safety and protection, yet they won't talk about Level 3 sex offenders that are like the one in the mall. They won't talk about that. They won't talk about the ones that come to the parks. They will talk about all these other people, but not this particular group. Why is that? The news won't touch it. At least we've got City Channel 5 touching it, but none of the news channels will talk about this creep up there at North Town Mall working at the cell phone place named Dean McGinnis. They won't talk about that. Yet, this guy's a flasher. And so you think about your children going in there, when is it going to happen? Level 3 sex offender likely to reoffend. Sexual predators, that's what that label is. And so I guess what the police got to wait for, we got to wait for them to commit the crime, right? That's what we got to wait for? I will say this, again, people have a right to know, I know the police can't do anything about the creep, but people have a right to know that there's one working there so they can make the decision not to go there. They should have that right, and the news should be talking about that right. That right is what we should be able to have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Gleason, Justice for All, and then Eugene Knowles.
Thank you, city council members. I'm here to talk about Resolution 0081. Our Bible tells us what's right...
So, this is open forum?
That's right. This is open forum.
Oh, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Our Bible tells us what's right and what's wrong, because the Word of God is the supreme authority. Let me be clear. Contrary to what the resolution says, there was unequivocally no hateful or dangerous speech or behavior at Sean Floyd's concert, just the opposite. And a little 83-year-old woman pleaded with you guys, trying to tell you that it was joyous and loving, and she was absolutely correct because I was there. Actually, there was a man there that stole Floyd's guitar, that actually accepted Christ and was water-baptized. Anything but dangerous and hateful. Floyd is not dangerous, but portrays the same boldness as Peter did in Acts 4, verses 29 through 31. And that word, boldness, in the Greek means outspokenness, unreserved utterance, freedom of speech with frankness, cheerful courage, which he is full of, and the opposite of cowardice, timidity, or fear. You guys might want to recant that resolution because it is full of untruth, all right? Jesus wasn't a lovey-dovey all the time. Yes, he healed everyone that I'm aware of that came to him, but he also protected his own spiritual rights. In Matthew, when Jesus went into the temple at Jerusalem by himself, he took a whip of cords, drove out those selling sheep, oxen, and doves, and overturned the money tables. This took a lot of force, and it was righteous anger. So was Jesus Christ the Son of God who loved all people, or was he hateful and dangerous? You be the judge. This Resolution 0083 is tainted with untruth, and some of you are using it as a tool for your own political advantage. Remember, we are all going to sit before the judgment seat of God. Thank you.
Justice for All, Eugene Knowles, and then William, Will Hughlings.
Hello, my name is Justice for All. I'm a Spokane resident. This last week, if you had the chance to see, there was renowned lawyer and founder of the Equal Justice Initiative and writer of the book Just Mercy, Bryan Stevenson. He was a very powerful speaker, talking about, you know, what we need to do to actually improve this community. And from his book as well, he quoted, "The opposite of poverty is not wealth. The opposite of poverty is justice." I want to sit with that for a second because it's a very powerful statement. And then I want to look at how many have slipped into homelessness under this administration and with this city council. How has this council or this mayor affected anything? What we do see is we see fear mongering and finger blaming, and Just Mercy is about bridging the gaps in our community, not creating divides between them. This administration has continued policies and blank checks toward bad policies that have worsened the situation while protecting their pocketbooks or giving their friends money, like Larry Stone. We've let commercial business property owners create policy for our police force while not answering calls with regular citizens without power. And this city continues acting like sweeping somebody along and getting rid of all their belongings doesn't perpetuate the issues they claim to want to prevent. I agree, we need to come together. I hope we have grace and mercy towards those who struggle because struggle is part of the human condition. We need to acknowledge that we have a health crisis, a health crisis of those losing their home, a health crisis of drug addiction and the opioid epidemic, a health crisis of mental health being used as a buzzword instead of addressing and providing care for those who experience it. Let's stop underfunding our public defenders, let's stop underfunding services, let's stop underfunding our schools, and let's work on solutions to lift people out of their struggle. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene, Will Hughlings, and then Sheri Barnett.
City Council President, members of the council, Eugene Knowles, here in Spokane since 2010. I'm going to use my time to try to figure out how to get my graphic up so that people can see it, and next time I come, I can explain, or maybe I'll have a few, a minute left to talk about it. How do I get this graphic so that it shows?
We could probably get it up next week with a photo on it, but you want me to distribute it?
Yeah, no, just if you, you can't get it up on the screen?
I need to take a photo of it now.
Well, you know, whatever. I'll just say I wanted to use this time to learn. I'll just say if...
Eugene, in the future, you can email it to me, GBYRD@spokanecity.org, and I'll make sure we can get it up on the screen.
I can say a few things while we're trying to get it up, but I'm dealing with four issues here, and usually these issues can drift one way or the other, and when they drift the wrong way, I call them political football, I guess we all do. They're religious, there's public safety, health and medical, and housing. And I could get off on some of these, and we all can, and give a bloviated statement, but I'm trying to move housing, which is, or homelessness, which is my focus, away from the political football area. It's tough because everybody's got their opinion, and often as not, it's not necessarily well-informed. And my graphic, once I can get it up, will save a lot of time because you'll be able to see the degrees in helping people get out of homelessness. I was homeless for 10 years, 2007 to 2017. I learned a lot, so when I filtered it down...
We can't hear you unless you stand by the microphone.
When I filtered it down, I've been unhomeless, if I can phrase that way, for the last five years. And that 10 years gave me a lot of insight of what people really don't know. So...
I can get that up next week?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I keep that written or do you need to keep it? Can I keep it until next week?
Okay. Will, Sheri, and John Alder.
Good evening. My name is Will Hughlings, and I am a MAGA Republican. How about that? Anyways, something I didn't hear mentioned once today, it's, I guess we celebrate two holidays today, Indigenous Peoples' Day and Columbus Day. But I'm 47, so when I grew up, we had Columbus Day. So Columbus Day is a U.S. federal holiday commemorating explorer Christopher Columbus landing in the New World on October 12, 1492. It also celebrates the cultural heritage of Italian-Americans. So while we talk about indigenous, how about we talk about also Italians? There's a lot of Italians in our community. Columbus has been an annual holiday in the U.S. since 1937, and it was created by a Democrat President Roosevelt in Congress. So I just, you know, I just thought I'd have to let you guys know that because you seem not to even want to acknowledge Columbus Day. Anyways, I also wanted to thank Councilman Zepone. I went on a bicycle ride with him the other day, and I do support a lot of what we, what he went over, and I hope he does more of that. But thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Barnett, John Alder, and then Anton.
City Council President Kinnear, I'm Sheri Barnett, and all the rest of you as well, and I live in Spokane. Today is a really important day because it sort of focuses on everything I've been saying. God keeps his promises, and he keeps his threats. Back in Genesis, God made a promise to a man named Abraham, and he said, "When you go, I'm going to give you a land of milk and honey." And it took from Genesis to Deuteronomy, Moses leading the people through, when God finally got ready, they got ready to cross over, and they had the chapter 28 in the Book of Deuteronomy, the blessings and the cursings. "If you obey my commands, I'm going to bless you." And there are so many blessings, like the kind of blessings we used to have. "And if you don't obey me, and if you become wicked and you follow other gods, I'm going to curse you." And I know that some of you are looking kind of angry with me, but it's very, very important right now because you're seeing that God keeps his promises. Took a long time for Israel to be back in the land. For 2,000 years, they were out of the land, and he's brought them back, and he's made a promise that they will never totally lose that land. He didn't make that promise to us. We have to obey God to have his blessing. Thank you much.
Thank you. John Alder, and then Anton.
Good evening. My name is John Alder from Spokane. I want to thank you for your recent action against Mayor Woodward's participation in the Mat Sha event. While I'm here, I'm going to offer a suggestion to the folks running the podium. This weekend, I attended the World Band Bitten Championships, a wonderful event enjoyed by many BIPOC members. The Indonesians and Chinese were encouragingly enthusiastic, and as far cry from the racist anti-gay event the mayor intended. But I asked the podium to please promote more events like this and make Spokane look better. While more know, I heard a lot of people speak about Christianity recently. Well, I suggest they go to Westminster UCC at Fourth and Washington, where they'll find that everybody is God-children, especially 25% of the members that are LGBTQ. Thank you.
Thank you. Anton.
My name is Anton Belon. Okay, politics, the dirty word. Can't turn religion, you know, you talk about God. You can't use that against other people, you know. This is what the forefathers said when they wrote the Constitution, is not to mix the religion with politics. I want everybody to think about that, and this is exactly the problem that we are dealing with today. Everybody's on their bandwagon, and as you look at the mayor when she came in with her clique, I mean, that shouldn't be like that, because these positions that city council and the mayor and any government position, city and, yeah, city and government are the public, are supposed to be for the people. We shouldn't go in there and say, okay, now I got my clique, and now we're going to do this. I mean, that's messed up. And when you deceive the people, especially the people that go to church, and they're not into politics, and you're telling them one story and blaming, like the, okay, I'm going to use the homeless. There are people that are losing, we probably have more today, people that are becoming homeless. But yet, when the city looks at it and the mayor and say, oh, we are doing this, and everything is kind of like in a la-la land, not being really serious or realistic, and how do you deal with that? You know, building all these apartments, somebody's getting rich, but it ain't the homeless.
Anton, time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're going to switch now to our consent agenda, so Ms. Fister, do you want to read that?
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, consultant agreement with Financial Consulting Group Incorporated, Redmond, Washington, to conduct the development service center cost of service fee analysis from September 18, 2023 to August 3, 2024, $106,270 plus tax of applicable. Number two, public works agreement with Duke's Root Control Incorporated, Syracuse, New York, for routine maintenance sewer pipe chemical root control for the wastewater management department from September 1, 2023 through August 31, 2024, $50,000 including tax. Item number three, contract amendment with Parametric Spokane for 2021, 2022 construction management on-call consulting, additional $60,000, total contract amount $860,000. Number four, contract amendment with Tierra Right-of-Wave Services, LTD, Tucson, Arizona, for 2021, 2022 historic resource on-call services, additional $100,000, total contract amount $300,000. Number five, master software services agreement with Rubicon Global LLC, Atlanta, Georgia, for route management and telematics solutions from October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2024, utilizing Sourcewell contract number 020221, RUB, $157,819 plus tax of applicable. Number six, contract extension with Systems and Software Incorporated, Winuski, Vermont, for annual support and maintenance of Enquesta, the city's utility billing management system from November 1, 2023 through October 31, 2024, $218,643.79 plus tax of applicable. Number seven, report to the mayor pending a claims and payments approved to proved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through September 29, 2023. Total $9,023,167.77 with Parks and Library claims approved by respective boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library. Total $8,671,009.20. B payroll claims of previously approved obligations through September 30, 2023, $9,128,710.10. Number eight, city council meeting minutes for September 28 and October 5, 2023. Number nine, amendment number one to inner local cooperation act agreement with Spokane County for establishment of the Spokane County Tourism Promotion Area, adding $1 per day to the existing $2 per day additional charge enacted in County Ordinance 22-0602, and adding two additional voting members to the current three for a total of five voting members. And number 10, contract amendment number one with the Washington State Department of Commerce for row funding award to be used for services related to housing and homelessness from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2025, $4,144,650.
Thank you. We don't have anyone signed up. Is there any council commentary? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Right, and opposed. Let's move on to the resolutions.
Resolution 2023-86, setting the assessment role hearing before city council for December 4, 2023, for the downtown parking and business improvement area, business improvement district bid, and providing notice of the 2024 assessments to business and property owners.
Thank you. We don't have anyone signed up. Did council member Cathcart or Bingle, did you want to comment on this?
No.
Right. Anybody else? All those in favor, just press your green button. Okay, good, thank you.
Hey, it worked.
And the next one.
Resolution 2023-87, setting the assessment role hearing before city council for December 4, 2023, for the East Bragg Parking and Business Improvement Area, business improvement district bid, and providing notice of the 2024 assessments to business and property owners.
All right, again, we don't have anyone signed up, so prepare to vote. All right, thank you. And next.
Resolution 2023-88, stating the Spokane City Council's opposition to measure number one entitled "Two-tenths of 1% sales and use tax for criminal justice, public safety, correctional infrastructure, and behavioral health purposes submitted by Spokane County Board of Commissioners for the November 7, 2023 general election."
Thank you. We have a number of people signed up. Thank you. We have a number of people signed up. We're going to start with Dave. He's going to call in, and then we have Angel, Tomeo, Sam, and Larry Andrews. So...
Dave, could you please hit star three?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dave.
Good evening, Council, Dave in Spokane. Once again, this is the same two council members, Wilkerson and Zepone, interjecting their spin in the election. This is called election interference, no different than what the majority on the council did regarding the mayoral race. This resolution against measure one is a continuation of the defunding of the law enforcement by two council members, one of which is running for council president and being funded by Defund the Police advocates. Measure number one is long overdue and essential to Spokane's survival. A two-tenths of 1% sales tax increase works out to a mere 20 cents on a $100 purchase. Come on, this is a no-brainer for all to support. Measure number one, as stated in this resolution, is for criminal justice, public safety, and behavioral health purposes. Who in their right mind would be against that? It doesn't even mention the word jail. We, the people, will decide. This is not just about a jail. It's time for Spokane to support measure number one to increase public safety in our community. This reconfirms why we need fresh outside leadership on the city council. This is why we must elect Kim Please as president, and also Katie Traylor and Earl Moore to fill the soon-vacated seats.
Point of order.
Try.
Point of order.
Okay, thank you. You're done.
Hello?
You're done.
Do you want to take the point of order?
Yes. We're not mentioning campaigns in this legislative comment. Is he off?
No.
Do you want to go on?
Am I back on?
Yes.
Okay.
Please refrain from campaigning.
Pay attention, folks. If the majority of the council is against it, we, the people, should be in favor of it. We just can't trust the majority on this city council. We, the people, must decide. Thank you, council. Have a good evening.
Angel, Tomeo, Sam, and Larry Andrews, and then Megra will call in.
Good evening, city council. I'm Angel Tomeo-Sam. I am currently the Director of Programs and Community Advocacy Pier for Yo-Yo Spokni. And I would like to kind of, you know, give some extra education about what a lot of people feel about ballot measure one. We do know that it'll increase the sales tax to raise $1.7 billion over 30 years. This measure really asks to write an open check without any real plans, with a lot of talk about what it can do, but nothing has been said about what it will do. We know that in this community, that the real reason for this measure, ballot measure, is to build a new jail. It does state that now on the new language for the ballot measure. And we're really, as a community, really grateful for that, that it does include jail infrastructure. I just want to talk about, you know, I've also been a bail disruptor for the Bail Project. And in my time, during the pandemic specifically, we were able to, along with this community, reduce jail populations by 40%. And in that time, there were weeks and weeks where we saw the jail population stay at or around that 462 bed mark, which is how, what the current jail population ought to be. For months, our cities saw that the jail was decarcerated, and the crime rate stayed the same, and even dropped at some points. At the Bail Project, we did, the people that I serve there, self-reported being unhoused, 75% of them self-reported being unhoused, and in need of behavioral health services. Those are the things that our community should be looking forward to. Those are the things that we can do to decarcerate that jail and make us, make Spokane a really safe community. I just want to add that, that with voting in for a massive jail expansion, that doesn't equal justice, it doesn't equal safety. And as a community advocacy pier, we know that the solutions are right here in our community. We do need more behavioral health services. We do need more housing. And there are too many folks at the ready-to-serve folks to decarcerate that jail. I just want to add, today, there are 835 people sitting in Spokane County Jail, where just about 60% of them are held pre-trial, and with no holds, meaning they could be bailed out, they could be released into the community, and served better than marinating in a jail where they're, they're, all they have to look forward to is either pleading, pleading out to get out of jail, or, you know, staying there for the duration.
Time's up. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Larry, and then Megra, and Alfonso Coleman.
My name's Larry Andrews, and I am a resident and a business owner here. We need a place to put the people, and I call them mainly drugers. They labeled people homeless. When I was young, they were called bums, okay? And they traveled from community to community. And my grandmother used to feed them in Omaha. And, but they chose that way of life, and they didn't want to change. And we have them at our office, and they don't want to change. But yet, they continue to break into our homes, our businesses, our cars. They litter, they mutilate all over the place. They take baths with no clothes on in front of our offices. And we had to shut the water off to the hose bibs, okay? It's, we need a jail. And we need a jail for these people, so they stand at least a half a chance to get clean. And there are several businesses that the people are running in Spokane have said that since they were put in jail, they were able to get themselves clean and reform themselves. But you put them back on the street, or wherever we're housing them, they go out every day, and they get their drugs again. And guess what? We just proliferate that pattern over and over and over and over, to the person is so depleted that they can't pull themselves out anymore. And so we need a jail to have the place where these people can get themselves clean. And I mean a jail for the people, to help them out of this spiral, okay? That's the only way we're going to help most of these people. They've got to have a place to go where they can get clean, and have the help to get them out of that jail, and end to be a productive citizen in this city, or any other city that they want to go to. But if we don't have the beds, and the services for those beds, we're never going to get them out of this spiral that these people are in. I don't know how plain you can see this, but it's just getting exponentially worse. And when we get all these illegal aliens coming across here, how many of these people have a grudge against the United States? Because we have no clue who's came across that border.
Larry, time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Megra, excuse me, Megra, Alfonso Coleman, and then Rick Bowkuk. Megra's online.
Go ahead, Megra.
Thank you. Right now, Spokane County's Measure One official webpage only lists two items under the question, what is Spokane County proposing to do with its share of the revenue? The first is expanding the Spokane County jail facility. The second is the creation and expansion of a downtown facility. That's it. The city council formal opposition to measure one cites a lack of detailed plan, which is true. The only official description is just lock them up, which is the exact thing experts say to not do, and is also in fact in direct opposition to the equity sentiment expressed in the reading tonight about Indigenous People Day. The JFA Institute's 2019 report revealed Native American people are incarcerated at 6.5 times the rate of white per population in Spokane County Jail. Measure One's simple expanding incarceration plan actually worsens this racial disparity. The Atlantic published a 2017 article citing the prison policies initiative Detaining the Poor publication, which found that median bail set for people was 11 to 19 times their median monthly earnings. In other words, the average bail was the sum of the average annual salary, or higher. In Spokane, the JFA found 70% of the jail's population was pre-trial. These are people who have not been convicted of a crime, but who simply cannot afford bail. The expert recommendation is to release people so that they aren't being incriminated for a poverty crime, something that cuts people off from their relationships, their jobs, and their medications. This results only in what current Superior Court Judge Jamie Hock calls the cycle of poverty. As people lose jobs and housing, releasing these people as recommended allows people to keep stability in their lives. A 2016 study published in Northwestern Law's The Journal of Criminal Law and Criminology, found that being jailed before trial significantly increases the likelihood of pleading guilty, being convicted, and receiving a longer prison sentence. Given the collateral consequences of detention, this includes losing a job or losing custody of children, and so prosecutors can more easily leverage guilty pleas regardless of actual guilt. In Spokane, the 2008 Bennett Latin Report confirmed this locally, with 93% of all Superior Court guilty verdicts being plea deals. 93% of people never went to trial, choosing instead to end their criminal legal nightmare to avoid further interruption to their lives. Measure One does not detail a plan for the estimated $1 billion other than lock them up, directly at odds with what experts say we need to do. Most people currently in our jails not only should not be there, but their lives are being irrevocably set back by the damage inflicted. Mental health services, housing, and alternative programs are all better. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfonso Coleman, Rick Bowkuk, and Justice for All.
Give an honor to God, who is the center of all of our lives. President Kinnear, council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I stand in solidarity with you in opposition to both Prop One and Measure One, that these will not heal the wounds in our city, that they will not help the homeless on our street corners, and on our underpasses, and in our parks. You could do a lot more with a lot less spending. Instead of spending up to words of $300 million on a new prison, a new gilded cage, or restricting all the places that these people can exist simply because they do not have a home, you could spend $100 million, and you could give, provide up to 12 months of rental assistance to the 2,390 persons listed as homeless in our city and in the county right now. As others have detailed in the meeting this evening, that number is actually far more than what is reported. That number would actually only take $40 million. The remaining $60 million can provide tailored health care, rehabilitation services, social care, and even employment assistance services. Universal basic income projects like this have already seen positive, if not counterintuitive, success in larger metropolitan areas such as Denver, San Francisco, and Vancouver, Canada. This is how we restore love in Spokane. This is how we build hope, not with more of the same, but with unconventional solutions for unconventional times. The Book of Luke, Chapter 10, verse 36 and 37, says, "Which of these do you think was neighbor to him who fell among thieves?" And he said, "The one who had mercy on him." Jesus said, "Go and do likewise." Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Bowkuk, Justice for All, Sherri Barnett.
It's very obvious that one of the things that is in this thing is called lack of transparency, and not knowing really where this money's really going to go. People talk about a jail. But I remember a while back when they were talking about a new jail, and one of the actual facts during that time was it was $140 a day per inmate, which is like $4,200 a month, which is like $50,000 a year per inmate. Think about that. Hundred, it's cheaper to put people in a motel or a hotel than it is to put people in jail. People aren't getting that clue, though. So there is a thing about housing, but I think you should look at the figures. I'm talking about several years ago. It's probably higher now, but $4,200 a month per person. And we live in a society that punishes you for accidents. And we have a bunch of people out here, you know, they keep talking about crimes, and but they want to criminalize homeless. But if they're really committing a crime, if they're actually, you know, beating some, that is a crime. That has nothing to do with homelessness. But that's the people they want to punish, because if they, it's like you heard earlier about this Boise thing. If that gets reversed, the cruel and unusual punishment just goes right out the door. Every one of you taken oath, uphold the Constitution. Eighth Amendment is a pretty powerful one, cruel and unusual punishment. So people want to build a jail? Why aren't you thinking about the $4,200 a month it takes to house one person, less than the cost of a hotel? You know, think about that one. I mean, these cheap motels, I mean, I think it's like $1,200 a month for one person. $4,200, that's, God, that's a bigger number. But people aren't thinking that way, are you? The facts are there. Thank you.
Justice for All, Sherri Barnett, and John Alder.
I want to talk about the main problem that I have with Spokane, and it's the lack of addressing the issues at the top. Right now, we know that 50% of our renter, our population are renters. We know that that has gone up for most renters, that rents have increased. They have the largest rent increases in the nation. We know that at 30% people paying their rent, that is a very close line to getting into poverty, because if you get sick, your child gets sick, you get injured, you miss a couple days of work, now your housing is in jeopardy. We know that 25, or of that half, 1/8 of all our renters are paying more than 50% in rent. This is not also including the inflation rates that have also happened to everybody within this county. We see that, you know, people then, you know, have the trauma of poverty, and the solutions that they need to face when going through so much. And there's something called, hold on one second, the social determinants of health, on whether or not people will, you know, increase their situation in life, increase their, or have a better station in life, or whether if these kind of things are not met, whether or not they can get over addiction, or, you know, get out of things. The social determinants of health also show that when we put people through the carceral system, because there are no ways out, there are not upward momentum, there's not ways that people get jobs or housing after being imprisoned, this is not what happens. You don't get more opportunities after being labeled something. You get less. And so the suicide rates of those people who enter and leave the carceral system are extremely high. So when we want to talk about compassion, we need to think about what's happening at the top, and what's the last outcome, and think about where the struggle is there, and are we doing anything about that? The answer is no, not with a couple of service providers who work in, you know, detox, no with, you know, the limited amount of community court, and no if there is now a personal personality issue, as you're going through so much trauma of dealing with the system, that if you have a conflict with somebody, you are now being refused a service. You are now being refused access to community court, and refused access to justice. I am not the most compassionate person in the world, but I think all of us can see that we see the outcomes when we don't have upward sol- that we see the outcomes when we don't have upward solutions. And this is the law, if we build it, they will fill it, kind of situation. You are planning on criminalizing all of those people who are struggling with those rent increases. You are planning on criminalizing everyone who's struggling with addiction and mental health issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherri Barnett, John Alder, and Teri Hill.
President Kinnear and members of the City Council, when I came here, 2021, I mean, 2001, sorry, they were saying they needed a new jail. Now, you guys have had lots of extra money, extra staff, the buses have had so much extra. Still, in all this time, it keeps coming up that they need a new jail. I actually, I volunteer at UGM and I go to Family of Faith Church, and there are a lot of people who have been addicted and who have been alcoholic. And the UGM, I think 97% of the people, they graduate from their program, get off of drugs, get off of alcohol, save up their money for an apartment, get a job, and make it back into regular life. Many of those people have told in their testimonies that they are thankful for the jail or the penitentiary because somebody came there and told them there was a better way of life. And they got dried out, and they found that they could regain a life with their family. Many of them have gotten their children back, their wives back. I would not like to see it be something where people are just because they don't have money that they can't get out of jail. But I trust that they're going to be judicious and loving people. And the UGM and the Roarhouses, they don't even take any money from the government. But there are a lot of people there that say they are grateful for the prisons and for the jail. Thank you.
John Alder, Teri Hill, and then George Taylor.
Good evening. So you're proposing a $1.5 billion on a new jail. Well, if it's correct that 50 or 60% of the current population is too poor to pay the bail, why not let them out? Then you probably got enough room in the old jail, and you don't need one. And if you really want to solve society problems and you want to spend $1.5 billion, why don't you spend it on housing? You can mix it up with tiny homes, homes for people in transition, homes for those on a fixed income that can't afford regular rent, then some for those just needing lower rent, even got that co-house, they might work for some middle class. Then you can watch the health of the homeless not housed improve by staying indoors rather than battling ailments, and also maybe also cleaning himself inside of their house instead of outside of their house. They also could feel safer in their own secure homes that they would have. This makes a lot more sense than cramming people into a dangerous, dour atmosphere that would just make their life worse. So remember, if you want to spend $1.5 billion, spend it on homes, not jails.
Thank you. And Teri Hill.
Thank you, Teri Hill, longtime Spokane resident. I received a flyer the other day in the mail telling me how wonderful Measure One is. As I read through it, I thought, boy, that's a lot of money. But I don't see a lot of detail on how that money's going to be spent. Kind of reminded me of that 1980's commercial, that hamburger commercial, where's the beef? You want that kind of money? If the county wants that kind of money from this old man, bring this back in a general election and bring the beef with you with that a yield, with that a yield of sodium.
Thank you. George Taylor, Zachary McGuckin, Natasha Hill.
Good evening, Council President Kinnear, city members, city council members. My name is George Taylor. I'm one of the pastors at the All Saints Lutheran Church in Brown's Addition, Spokane. I also served as the state chaplain at Eastern State Hospital in the forensic section, which is another name for the criminally insane. I speak tonight against Measure One. As a citizen and taxpayer, I hope that you do the right thing and do the same by voicing your unanimous opposition to Measure One that appears on the November 7th ballot less than a month away. I do not speak for them, but I do not know one person in my congregation who is for Measure One. In the course of my pastoral care, I have visited Spokane County Jail downtown and been inside many courtrooms on Broadway on many different occasions. One inmate I was visiting on multiple occasions had been held for over two years in pre-trial detention for a crime that I believe that she did not commit. As you know, in our criminal justice system, if you are charged with a crime, you are innocent until proven guilty. She was innocent until proven guilty. The reason she was there was she could not post bail, as many other speakers tonight have said. The jail could be reduced by half if our bail bond system were abolished, as they have done in some jurisdictions in New York and Illinois, and it's working very well. I was in the courtroom over on Broadway both times when Judge Tony Hazel heard the arguments for and against the language of making the jail, Measure One, more clear and more transparent, of proposing $1.7 billion of taxpayer money. In the, finally, Judge Hazel ruled that in the first way that the measure was put on the ballot, the word jail did not appear. Judge Joni Hazel ruled fairly. He said, "You must put the word jail," as a previous speaker said, "into the referendum." And there it sits now, so at least the taxpayers will know what they're voting on. Instead of spending a billion dollars for a new jail, a much better way to reduce the jail population would be to abolish the bail bond system and provide better services in the existing jail. What we need is not a new jail. What we need is a smaller and better jail. Twice before, the voters of Spokane County have defeated proposals to build a new jail because they knew that that was not the answer. The real answer lies in the root causes of why we have the highest, thank you, vote no.
Sorry. All right. Zachary McGuckin, Natasha Hill, and then Alexis Tenasket.
Hello, my name is Zachary McGuckin, and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I live in Spokane. I've lived here for five years now. And we've had a lot of people, you know, listing off the numbers and statistics. I think we can see how economically it's a horrible decision. But I want to take a moment to point out the irony of the fact that we're voting on this in our current moment with today being Indigenous Peoples' Day, and while we're also seeing overseas a mass uprising of Indigenous people against colonial occupiers. We've had, seen a prison, the largest prison in the world, destroyed just two days ago, and those people set free. I think this shows a message that the people of the world aren't going to stand by jails anymore. We're not going to allow our fellow members of society to rot away in prison. If you vote in approval of the building of a new jail, what you are voting in approval of is giving the county a new apparatus of violence to use against us, everybody in this room, at least all the working and oppressed people in this room. And so I beg, or not beg you, I tell you all to vote this down and stand with the working and oppressed people in our city, in our county, and in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Natasha Hill and Alexis Tenasket.
Natasha's online. Go ahead, Natasha.
Hi, thank you. This is Natasha Hill. I'm an attorney here in Spokane, have my own practice, and I consider myself a community advocate. I am also in opposition to Measure One. I also share a lot of sentiments that have been shared in terms of the importance of being transparent by having the measure ballot title changed and was a participant in that through community organizations. I think that a lot that's been shared, one thing to remember is the timing of this seems very poignant. We have the two county commissioners who were able to push this through, Al French and Josh Kearns, trying to keep out the voices of new commissioners elected, Amber Waldorf and Chris Jordan, who are also in opposition to this measure. Obviously, it lacks a lot of transparency and specifics of what it's for. We've heard some great ideas on what we can do instead, and I think it's important to remember that we need to hear from voices who have this lived experience, who are impacted. It's nice to hear people share secondhand stories, but it's really important to look at who's speaking and what they're speaking about. We also have council members who are in support of this, and I think it's important that we pass this. One of those fundamental flaws that we're missing is all the alternatives that are available. All of the services that folks get maybe after going to jail can be provided without that. We don't have to criminalize people based on them being in poverty, them being homeless, them having a substance abuse issue. And who are these folks, right? A lot of times, they are our veterans, those are people who have had accidents, who've encountered the criminal justice system without having necessarily intended to. And we've got a lot of people who are vulnerable. We've got elders, we've got seniors, people who are subject to losing their housing. I think the idea of investing this into housing, into substance abuse, you know, fentanyl right now is killing, it's one of the highest killers that we have. People are dying literally at 7:11 down on Third. And we heard about it last campaign season, but we're not seeing any direct response to address these issues. It does feel like they're creating a sense of a lack of safety in order to have a reason to criminalize it, as if this is the only way to recovery, this is the only way to housing, this is the only way to treatment, mental health services, that people are saying, hey, this is what we need in order to avoid the criminal justice system. And again, reducing bail when you see those numbers and contrast those with some of the propaganda that's being put out around Measure One. When we peel back those layers and we can actually see the lack of specifics, that there's nowhere this money goes, and then to the earlier point of how much it's going to cost ongoing to keep folks incarcerated, if they build it, they're going to fill it. One of my concerns as a mom in this community is that they're going to try to restore contracts to create and restore that school-to-prison pipeline, and then it's going to be our kids and our youth who we know are going to be disproportionately impacted if they're poor, if they're black or brown.
Natasha. Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Why, chasul chalt, iskuiskuwashawat ul. My name is Alexis Tenasket in English. I said greetings and good day in Okanagan Salish. So I am here, I work with the MAC movement, and with my experience with the MAC movement, I've been able to hear a wide variety of stories of people who have a lot of experience with incarceration and are most likely to be incarcerated again. Severely impoverished people, people experiencing addiction, severe mental and/or physical trauma, including veterans, people disowned by their families and social groups for being Two-Spirit LGBTQ people, a disproportionate amount of BIPOC people, victims of domestic violence, et cetera. It is less expensive to taxpayers and safer for the entire community long-term to house people in homes. And to address some of the concerns mentioned here at this mic today, people who have their needs met, such as housing, food, water, mental and physical healthcare, treatment, and inclusive support for overcoming addiction, social, emotional support and safety, people whose needs are met have more privacy, so they wouldn't have to bathe, sleep, and fight for their survival in public. They wouldn't be suffering so badly in the streets in public. People whose needs are met are much less aggressive, much less desperate for resources, which leads to a decrease in undesired behavior. People who dry out in jail are at high risk of relapsing when released or sooner, and relapses are easily fatal. There are many better options available, and they're already being built. They just need to be funded and scaled up. These ideas are much closer conceptually to the Indigenous systems and ways of living in this place since time immemorial. Indigenous peoples have been able to sustain life, prepare for future generations, center wellness, and take care of our environment in this place for thousands of years, while colonial systems have caused concerningly unsustainable problems in just a few hundred years. Maybe it's time we listen and follow the lead of authentic Indigenous cultures, especially on Indigenous Peoples' Day. Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I yield my time in honor and in honor of all the Native people and plants and animals and our water.
Thank you. Okay. Council testimony.
So I'll say a couple things. So first off, I just, I want to again say that, because there was mention of it earlier, that I've been on city council for 10 years. There has not been one time ever in 10 years with any city council that I've sat on that any city council member has voted to defund police. It's never happened, and I just want to be very clear. In fact, we had a study session last week that told us the police budget right now or has been around 60 million. It's going up to about 80 million, I think, was the number. And the person giving us the numbers said, "So, city council, you have not been defunding police. So please use that how you wish." I just, every time I hear it, I try and correct that misstatement. I can't support a jail when we have information that is very vague. It's, it feels like we're, it's an open check to Spokane County and absolutely no plan. There's no plan. We've asked for specifics, and especially going into resources, what kind of wraparound resources will be available to those that are incarcerated to get them out of that. And there's nothing there that we've heard that can convince me this is a good thing to do. We need better services. We need a plan. We need better communication. And I think that we should be taking the suggestions from the community and looking at a better way to deal with crime and individuals that are incarcerated, because we've had jails for centuries, it just doesn't work. And I think somebody up here said, "The next generations and the generations after are going to find a better way to help people and to give people resources to get out of their problems." So that's where I'm at. But just remember, we have never defunded the police. Thanks.
Who's next? Go ahead.
I have a couple words. Thank you so much. I first like to say, the stories of success, I'm always glad to hear that they have gone to some program or some religious organization and have found their way to the other side. But we know one size doesn't fit all, and it's complicated for each person. So however those successes work, I'm glad to hear that, but it's not for everybody. I have to tell you, I spoke at Lewis and Clark last week to three classes of senior civics, and I was, they asked me about this, and I was trying to explain it to them about what was going to happen. So just to make it simple, I go, "Well, you want to build a house, you want to build it for 30 years with a mortgage payment, but you go to the bank, and you don't have a plan, you don't have a location, and do you think the bank would approve your house?" Of course, they all said no. And I says, "This will be for 30 years." I say, "Everyone in this room is 18 years old. You will be 48 years old at the end of 30 years of paying for this." Of course, they all look back, "Oh, my god, I'll be 48 years old." But there is an impact on not just us who are currently, but there's an impact on the young people that are coming behind us with this, that we are putting that we are putting something on them that they've had absolutely no input into. I've been on the park board plan along with Councilmember Bingle, and we have a more detailed plan for parks than we do for this jail. So with all the uncertainty, I cannot support it. Do we need to improve our facilities? Absolutely. Do the inmates need a decent place to stay? Do the employees need a decent environment? Absolutely. I guess I question, is this the best route? And I've also questioned, why has the county let it got in such a state of disrepair over these years? Why hasn't there been investment going forward?
Who else? Go ahead.
Yeah. So a couple of things. I just want to make it clear. I mean, I think we've heard from a lot of folks today that our criminal justice system is broken, and no doubt it is. It's very broken, especially here in Spokane. The problem is, the only source of funding to actually correct it is Measure 1. And that is, in my opinion, why opposing it would not be the right thing to do. There are a number of things that I think that we need to invest in, from more defenders and prosecutors. I believe we should partner with district court to create a full-time night court. We need more capacity for community court to actually do their work and hold their folks accountable. Law enforcement, more tools. We need more behavioral health partnerships for our officers out on the street, and we can't pay for any of that. In fact, we're struggling, or we did struggle, I think we finally agreed on it, but we struggled to, to agree on $15,000 for a pilot for first-time appearance at track. I mean, this is sort of a simple thing to do, and yet there was some consternation over it. Why? Because we are in a very dire financial situation. So if you want to see improvements to the criminal justice system, we need revenue, plain and simple. Now, there has been, I think, a campaign of confusion that's been run. There's no doubt about that, and it's successful. It's a very successful tactic. I would just encourage folks, if you do have questions, whether or not you agree with what's there, there is a whole lot of detail on the county's website about what they are proposing for their share of the dollars, and so you can check that out. As far as, as our side, yeah, we, we have yet to hold a hearing. We could do that at any time. I've talked with Councilmember Bingle about the possibility of doing that soon on some different options that, that have been considered. But to me, that's on us, and that's our decision to not make some decisions as to how we would spend our allocation of the 40%, which I guess is about 28% when it comes down to it. And so, I mean, and at the end of the day, I will tell you, and if you've not taken a tour of the jail, that should be the very first thing you do before making up your mind on this. That facility is in a really bad state, and I think they are trying to invest in it right here with this measure. I agree, there, there has been consternation over this investment for decades. There was somebody said that we voted twice. I don't believe that's true. We've voted on other things, but I do not believe we have ever voted on a jail, at least not since the current jail was built. And so if I'm wrong on that, please let me know when those votes were. I'd love to go take a look at what those were and, and how those unfolded. But to my knowledge, there has not been a vote on it, on a jail facility. And a lot of that has to do with consternation over what does it look like? What's the size? What's the scope? What's the cost? And of course, you know, the longer and longer mistakenly they took, the more expensive it's become and more challenging. But again, our share of the dollars that would come if Measure 1 passes would allow us to actually start to address the failings of our criminal justice system here in the city, allow us to create some partnerships that would advance, and make our community a heck of a lot safer, add more accountability, and just improve the outcomes. And so if those are things that you're interested in, please give it a strong look. But at the end of the day, the voters are going to have their say. They're going to weigh all the information, they're going to read and listen to what everybody says, and they're the ones that will make this decision. It doesn't really matter what this council does tonight. So I'll leave it there.
Go.
All right. Yeah, I just want to say that we all agree and believe that we should have improvements in our public safety system and our criminal justice system. We believe in a city and county where everyone should feel safe wherever they go. And we all recognize that the current facilities are inadequate. However, Measure 1 does not assure us that any improvements will actually make our community a safer, safer place. I think it's very unfortunate that we're in this situation right now to be voting on it and, and in a way of opposition right now. Council President and I wrote a letter to the county asking them to delay this vote so that we could have more collaboration and more talk, to have more assurances of this, both for the city, but also for voters in the public. Measure 1 is a $1 billion blank check to the county. The county commissioners, I was just looking on the website while you were talking, Councilmember Cathcart, they only have a plan for new facilities. That's it, just a new building. The measure talks about services and behavioral health, but there's no plan about what those services are and what they'll do. That one facility, right now advocates and proponents of, of Measure 1 are talking about changing the location potentially, and this has not been supported by people downtown, that the location has not been supported by people downtown. One county commissioner even said, let's just pass this and come up with a plan after it's passed. I don't know of any other ballot measure that's gone to taxpayers without having a plan of how the money will be spent. Maybe this could have been done cheaper, and we wouldn't have to be raising as much money as we are now, or taxing ourselves as much as we would be under this. Measure 1 has no assurances for behavioral health spending. It could be $1, or it could be $1 million a year. We have no way to know how much will be dedicated to behavioral health or wraparound services. It also does not address staffing concerns, which is the main constraint right now of current jail capacity. We could be opening more beds right now at Geiger, but we are not because we're constrained by staffing. So as we've talked about a lot, we have no plan at the city. This would be having money coming into the city. The mayor has said that this could pay for more police officers, which would be great, but our current police department leadership has said that they have no plans or expectation to fully staff our police department for the next couple of years. So what would the money be spent on over the next couple of years? I agree, this is a missed opportunity. Earlier, Councilmember Cathcart mentioned that he doesn't think this will get, go forward to voters in the future, or have an opportunity to pass. Unfortunately, I've heard county commissioners say that, you know, we'll just do it again the next year. And I think that's poor planning, that if we had come up with a good plan and, and went to voters, it would be more likely to pass, but the first impression is going to be the impression they remember the most. So I think this resolution is clear that it is not just about opposing Measure 1, but we are saying, if this resolution passes, we're also saying things that we think should be included, that we want to include in a work group in the future. Expansion of therapeutic courts, expansion of a crisis stabilization center, additional judicial capacity, equity assessment, screening for criminal justice policies, expansion of co-deployed teams with mental health, creation of an intake and release center to reduce unnecessary short jail stays, court rides program and release, supported release, and reentry support. We're being very clear that we are not just opposing any investment in our public safety system. We want to see these things included in a ballot measure, and it's unfortunate that the county did not want to collaborate and talk with us about this. So I also can't help the irony here, that many of these council members up here on, on the dais are accused of being taxed and spend all the time. In this case, I want to be clear, this is not advocating for a tax increase for a $1 billion blank check. So is this the best use of taxpayer dollars over the next 30 years? We don't know, because we don't know what the plan is. I support spending time to come up with that so that we can go to voters and know that we will have a commitment to improve our criminal justice system that will make everyone feel safe.
Councilmember Orland.
Actually, I had a whole statement memorized, but I appreciate what my colleagues have said in support of this measure against Measure 1, and I appreciate what I heard from folks this evening. In fact, I think the statement, where's the beef, is adequately represents my feelings on this measure. Thank you.
Councilmember Bingle.
Jacobi, could you pull that up for me? So I'm not going to have us actually play this video here, but one of the things that has been said a lot tonight, and I think mistakenly said, is that there is no plan, okay? The county has a plan. The county has put together a five, six-minute video showing how the money is going to be raised, what it's going to be going for, what programs are going to be added. There's, there's a pretty good video here that we need to update our browser to see. But anyway, we-
I'll get it up.
We'll get it up. Okay, anyway. So when, when people say there isn't a plan, I, I think it's, it's again, a mis, an incorrect statement, because there is a plan. Now, we can say we don't like the plan. That's totally fair, right? That's within our purview. But to say that there isn't a plan is factually incorrect, because there is a plan. Is it down to how every penny is going to be spent? No, because as we're saying, $1.7 billion is a lot of money. You cannot account for every one of those pennies as it's coming in, but you can give general buckets as to where it's going to be spent, and I think that's incredibly fair. I think that's something that happens quite a bit. To say it's a $1 billion blank check, I think is also an incorrect statement, because it can't be used for anything. It has to be used for the specific purposes that the people will be voting on, which includes a correctional facility, which includes public safety. There are, there are specific uses for these dollars. When we talk about, you know, that the city hasn't been engaged, again, I don't really agree with this statement. The county came before us four months ago and shared with us, this is what it is. In December, this resolution was approved. It's been on, we've been, we've known that this vote was coming for almost a year, and yet we continue to say there haven't been discussions. There actually have been discussions. I have discussed with county leadership, I've discussed with city leadership, because it was a priority of mine. I wanted to understand what the dollars were going to be spent on, how it was going to be spent, and how we as a city would spend that money, because it's going to be a significant amount of revenue for the city of Spokane. We're talking, you know, about $7 million a year, $8 million a year that'll be coming into the city of Spokane. And we're talking about significant investments in public safety, or again, as other council members on here have, have correctly stated, we do have budget holes when it comes to our public safety going forward, and we need to, we need to fill those gaps. And this is a great way for us to do it. Without that ability to do, without some sort of revenue source, we are not going to be able to maintain that level of service. And what will likely end up happening is unless a, a revenue source is passed by the people, then there will have to be a reduction of services or programs provided or something like that, because we don't have the money to support where we're going in the future. I've heard a lot about criminalizing homelessness, and I'm confused by this, because it has nothing to do with homelessness. It has everything to do with crime, okay? And so when people are saying, you're just going to lock up all the homeless, this is actually not correct. This is not what we're intending to do. When you look at the folks who are in the jail right now, and we did a tour, 80 people in the jail are murderers. Murderers. We're not talking about low-level offenders that are in the jail right now. We're talking violent offenders. We're talking DV, we're talking assault, we're talking murder, we're talking rape, we're talking serious crimes that have been committed, and we don't have enough capacity to hold those. To this body, to this community, I would ask, does evil exist? Because people who are opposing this measure come in and act as if everybody who's in jail is somebody who's been wrongly accused, wrongly convicted, and I just disagree with you. Evil in this world exists, and if that is the case, then there must be a way for the community as a whole to deal with the idea, what do we do with an evil person? What do we do with a person that has taken another person's life? If we get rid of the jails, what do we do? What do we do? There has to be a place where people who've committed acts of evil can serve penance for their crimes, okay? This is not just good for them, okay, and good for the community, but it is, again, what I, what I wanted to say there is that it's also good for them. It's good for them to reflect on their, their acts, the things that they have done, and make a change in how they're going to live their life in the future. When we talk about $4,200 a month per person, and how it's cheaper to put somebody in a hotel, it's not just about money. You do not want to put a murderer in a hotel room right next to somebody else. You do not want to put a rapist into a hotel room right next to somebody else. Sometimes evil exists, and we need to, we need to put it in a place where it cannot commit acts of evil again. I heard the statement that jails don't work. If jails don't work, then why do we as a city council, why do we as a body continue to fund the jails that we have? We have the ability to defund the prison, we have the ability to defund the jail, if that's what we want to do, but we're not doing that. And so we must inherently understand that jails serve a purpose, and if some jail is good, okay, if we have the capacity to hold more people who are committing criminal acts, that might also be a good thing for the community. But we don't want to, we don't want to acknowledge that. I have heard that, you know, there hasn't been a lot of community engagement. Again, I have a list here of community engagement that the city council, or not the city council, but the county commissioners went out and engaged in. This, I reached out to Commissioner Kearns, I can forward you this email. But for, for many months, many community groups, organizations, and chambers, city councils throughout the county, and this is a partial list of what's been represented. So when it comes to this, when we're talking about these things, I think that it is a totally fair statement for us to say, we don't like the plan. If that's the case, we can do it, okay? We can make that statement. But that's not the, that's not what we're saying. I don't think we should be getting into this at all, but if we are, we should be supporting, in my view, as a city, this measure, because it does a lot for us. I submitted that submission, that substitution earlier today, and it failed. Tonight, I will vote against this, because I think it's, it's inherently good for our community to move forward with this plan, but, you know, we'll see what happens with the vote.
Yeah, Councilmember Bingle, I was just wondering, how much is the actual construction of the new jail?
$300 million.
And it's a $1.7 billion tax increase?
Correct.
So what are we doing with the other billion dollars?
So a quarter of that is going to come to the city of Spokane, or a little over a quarter of that, and we're going to spend it on public safety programs. Portions of that are not only going to go to the, the building of the facility itself, but the, the county is also going to be investing in their law enforcement officers and other things. There's, I mean, there's good uses of the money that's going to, that's going to happen. And if we watch the video right here, we'll actually see what they propose that the, the money go toward.
But it's not clear, and of all the municipalities, which is 700 million, no municipality has a plan.
That's incorrect. That's factually inaccurate.
I haven't seen any.
We as a body have not voted on a plan. That doesn't mean that a plan hasn't been worked on, because again, we've known about this since December, and to my knowledge, not many council members have been working on a plan. I have been working on a plan diligently with the administration since the time I got elected for something to do with this money, because I was going to propose my own sales tax increase before this one happened, and the county preempted me. But we do have a plan for what we will do with this money, absolutely.
And my last question is, how many beds does this increase the facility by?
According to Sparber, I believe it's 300 or 400 that increases, something like that.
According to their website and one-page pamphlet, you can see it right here, it says, current capacity, 1,986, future 2,028. That's 42 beds, according to their one-page-
The jail is on hold 1,900. It must be including Geiger in that.
Existing jail is 462. It's including Geiger. So 42 beds. I don't know how that's going to radically change our public safety system from what-
Because Geiger's broken, that's why.
So I just want to point out that it's not going to radically change anything. It's 42 beds from their own website right here.
Okay. So anybody else?
I'm just going to ask, I just happened to see Council Bingle's notes. You want to rattle off the community engagements?
Yeah.
Then I have a comment.
Yep. So these are some of the community engagements, not all, okay? May 18th, the mayor's cabinet, June 5th, Spokane City Council, June 27th, Spokane Valley City Council, September 8th, Council of Governments, September 12th, where, by the way, at the Council of Governments, at least five council members saw the plan. September 12th, Millwood City Council, September 14th, State of the Counting, September 15th, joint board meetings with the, looks like the Chambers of Commerce. 20th, Association of Realtors, 25th, Airway Heights City Council, 27th, Police Guild, 3rd, the City of Medical Lake, 3rd, Liberty Lake City Council, 9th, Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce. More upcoming is Deer Park City Council and Genie City Council.
Thank, thank you for that. And I, I say that because I know that when this came about, the county had allocated about a couple hundred thousand dollars for community engagement. And that is some community engagement, and I don't think that's a community engagement that I was thinking of, of citizens. And to date, really, what's been deliverable has been the video of that community engagement. So that's high level. When the engagement gets down to grassroots folks where they live, then I'll consider we've accomplished community engagement.
I just want to add one more thing to, to Zach's point, is that a few weeks back, we were all part of a big email chain, and it was downtown businesses, other electeds, and other business people. And the, it was from a local businessperson who said, let's just get this passed, and then we'll make the move to get this in Airway Heights. And so that, that was confusing to me, because I think the plan is, it's supposed to be put in the- in the county district area. And so it really started me thinking about how much of this has really been transparent if we're saying things like, "Let's just get this passed, and then we'll talk about getting it moved to Airway Heights." And so I sent it to the Airway Heights city manager, making sure that he was aware of it, the comments, and he wasn't, but he was going to keep an eye on it. So, I mean, it's those kinds of things that you see that make you really wonder how well put together this really is, this plan, and it makes me nervous, the amount of money that's involved.
I do want to correct a statement.
Oh, good.
Reading over this graph in better detail. It says 410.
Yes.
It was the capacity at 1,986 the year, and then what it would be at 2,028. So do want to correct that statement.
Yes. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, thank you to Councilmembers, because that's just what I was going to say. Also, I did ask the county commissioners if there was any chance that the jail is moving that location. There has been no substantial conversations. There are no ongoing conversations. The jail has been located at that campus for over 100 years. It is the second-oldest building on the county campus besides the county courthouse. That is where the facility is going to go. They're not going to move it, so.
Okay. Anybody else before we vote? All right. Prepare to vote.
Okay, what am I voting on?
This is in opposition to Measure 1.
Did you all vote?
No, we want to...
Need to stratton. You're a little late. Let's try that again. Prepare to vote. Okay. Did everybody get... Yes. All right. Thank you. All right. Now, Terry, I think you have to read the next one in its, it's the, what's the number here? 0091. Do you want to read it in entirety? And then Councilmember Bingle, you'll be prepared to talk about it.
Resolution number 2023-91, a resolution condemning the violent act of war perpetrated against the state of Israel and affirming its right to exist and defend itself, whereas the city of Spokane values peace, justice, and the well-being of all its residents and recognizes the significance international conflicts have on local scale, and whereas Spokane community members have close family members and ties to individuals living under threat in Israel, and whereas the recent violent acts of war perpetrated by Hamas and its allies against the state of Israel have caused immense suffering to Spokane residents and Israelis, and whereas the state of Israel, like any sovereign nation, has the inherent right to defend itself against acts of aggression and terrorism, and whereas the city of Spokane is home to a diverse population that includes residents of Jewish and Palestinian descent, and whereas advancing inclusion and belonging for people of all races, national origins, and ethnicities is critical to guaranteeing the safety and security of all residents of Spokane, and whereas each of us has a personal responsibility to prevent the spread of misinformation, condemn violent acts in any form, support all fellow community members, and reject stigma, hate, and bias in all its forms, and now therefore be it resolved that the city of Spokane, number one, condemns the violent acts of war perpetrated by Hamas and its allies against the state of Israel, which have caused immense suffering and destabilization in the region. Number two, affirms Israel's right to exist as a sovereign nation and to defend itself against acts of aggression and terrorism. And number three, expresses its support of the residents of Spokane, including those of both Jewish and Palestinian heritages, and reaffirms its commitment to fostering a community that is welcoming to all.
Okay. We did not have anyone sign up for this, so Councilmember Bingle, do you want to go ahead and tell us about this?
Yeah, so this, obviously, I'm sure many people have been watching the horrific violence that's been perpetrated against the Israeli people, the war crimes that have been perpetrated against the Israeli people. And as I was watching it, there were certain videos that struck me pretty close, especially when it was dealing with young children. And for me, there were community members that I spoke to that asked us if we would make a statement on this, and so I wrote this statement this weekend to give a voice to those folks. I spoke with members of the Orthodox Jewish community, of the Reform Jewish community, those who fight against antisemitism, and families who have family and loved ones who are living in Israel currently. And as a result, this is the message that we came up with. We, when Russia, again, brutally invaded Ukraine, we made a similar statement. As a matter of fact, a couple of the whereas statements, I just copied and pasted right from that and put it into here, but I think it'll be good for our Jewish brothers and sisters for us to make this statement today, and I look forward to everybody's vote.
Yeah, I thank you to Councilmember Bingle for bringing this forward, and I'm just going to read a statement from a constituent, Jenna Ray, who is the director of the ZONE Project. Her daughter is currently in Israel, and she provided me this statement and gave me permission to share it. "Our city stands behind the 'End the Violence' campaign, supporting sovereignty over your own body. Rape, torture, and murder in order to exert power, pain, and fear over others is condemned. Abuse of children and the elderly is considered inhumane and would never be used as a way to move your civic agenda forward. In Israel this weekend, unspeakable brutal torture of women, children, and the elderly was carried out systematically, filmed, and joyfully released to all Israeli citizens over social media with shouts of 'To God be the glory,' in order to spread terror, grief, and apparent victory, city by city, from a terrorist organization, Hamas, to a democratic government. Hamas, the terrorist group, hates the U.S. the most, according to New York Times data, followed by Pakistan, Lebanon, Yemen, and Iraq. 9/11 was a devastating, one-time air attack and breach of our borders. Our government is working hard to assure this evil demonstrated in Israel does not turn back toward U.S. soil and citizens. This is a ground war, and cells within Israel make it impossible to secure citizens within borders. It's not over. Iran's state television showed parliament members rising from their seats to chant 'Death to Israel.' Reservists are now being called up from the U.S. and Canada. Those living in Israel, like my daughter, have been told to prepare for no power, no internet, and to stockpile water, food, and cash. You cannot book flights to leave. Missiles are now reaching the airport. The official numbers of the dead is only being reported from hospitals. The vast majority of people injured, murdered, or missing are unaccounted for, are currently inaccessible. Three entire military units were killed by drones the first day. Multiple mayors were murdered, and the terrorists filmed themselves in their offices as the new government. Lior Levy, a paramedic, says, quote, "Every word I say about what I saw and experienced cannot truly convey what was there: a battlefield, bodies of men, women, children, girls, elderly, and animals. It's time to unite. It's time for leaders at all levels of government to stand up. What is Spokane's response to this atrocity? Is this the way one government is allowed to express disagreement with another? Spokane stands to end the violence."
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Prepare to vote. Very good. Thank you. Terry, can we read first reading ordinances, please? There are two, and then we have some folks that have signed up to talk.
Ordinance C.36448 relating to the Paper Cuts Code Amendments 2023 Project, amending Spokane Municipal Code, Section 17C.110.225, accessory structures; Section 17C.120.580 plazas and other open spaces; Section 17C.230.145, development standards for residential uses; Section 17C.240.250, off-premises signs; Section 17C.250.020, dimensional standards in Section 17G.080.040, short subdivisions; and Ordinance C.36449, establishing the Language Access Program for the city of Spokane and adopting a new Chapter 18.11 to Title 18 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Further actions deferred in the first reading ordinances.
Thank you. Dave M.?
Go ahead, Dave. Go ahead, Dave. You're unmuted. Dave, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
This isn't Dave. This is someone else, and I was speaking...
Dave, can you hit star 3 if you're still on?
Justice for all, and then John Alder.
So after hearing that what you all realize are community members are just actually city officials from other cities, it makes a lot of sense why this has taken so long to get any kind of language access moving, while that has been at the detriment of anyone who speaks anything other than English for so long. We know that this is still a problem with courts, law enforcement, and basically any service in Spokane. So really, I hope that, you know, the pacing could pick up on this quite a bit since it's been a long, long time, and we still haven't seen any real results from the language access that was passed, or the language access bills that were passed last year that have been both used to platform and to say, "Oh, look at a good job we're doing," but nothing has been done. Thank you.
John Alder?
Hello again. In a world as diversified as ours, communication is the most important element. What were your tasks, thoughts, and wishes understood? You need to know what is said, but there are hundreds, possibly thousands, of languages spoken, not enough time to learn. Translations are very important to bridge their language scraps. My working life as a janitor, we had many languages spoken in our trade. Marshallis at the Rock Point, Russians on my team at Bank America, the Haitian couple giving me a ride home from Rock Point. Our personal director at ABM was to take great steps, make sure there was somebody to translate English for those that did not know how. This ordinance should help the city correct any language barriers that could hinder any proper execution of their duties to serve those that don't speak English. One area brought to my mind is attention to some urgency calls. I was recently told that recent forest fires left some people that don't speak English as confused as what to do. So when you're doing this, hopefully you'll figure out a way to make sure that that is corrected as well. All said, I hope this language does correct all language barriers and makes Spokane an efficient, safe place to be.
Thank you. Okay, we're at the end of our meeting. Good job, everybody. We will adjourn. We'll see you here October 16th, one week from today. Thank you.